Good morning, everybody. Sorry for the delay to get our tech working. But we will go ahead and call the June 27 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission to order it and get started with the pledge of allegiance. And the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the great flagrant flag of British Columbia, one nation, equal and indivisible, with liberty and justice as its highest goal. May. You should do. Hello. Are there any staff announcements today?
I do have an announcement. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Robie to the commission. Nice to have someone sitting next to me for a change. I'd also like to introduce to you our newest addition to our staff, Lindsay Smith, who's sitting there in the back, recently of the city of Oceanside, but she's sort of come back up to Northern California where her roots are. So we're really happy to have her on board, and she's just going to sort of watch today to see how the planning commission operates. So guys, unnoticed, best behavior.
That's wonderful. Welcome to Calaveras County or back to Calaveras County. Okay, any agenda changes?
No.
Then we will open that meeting for general public comment, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on an item within the subject purview of the planning commission, but not on the agenda today. Is there anybody in the audience or online who is here to talk to us about something not on the agenda today? No online public comment? Nope. Then we will close the public comment, period, and take a look at our consent agenda, which is exclusively minutes of past meetings today. Is there any member of the public or the commission who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Heavens, no.
Then is there a member of the commission who would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 8 through June?
I will. I'll second that.
Do you want to?
Yes. I'm going to abstain from three of them because I was not here, March 27, April 3, and April 11.
Great. So let's take those three and amend that motion to handle those three, so all in favor of approving the March 27, April 3, and April 11 minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. And two abstentions.
Yeah.
And then we will cover the rest of them with the next.
I move that we cover the rest of them.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? And two abstentions, so it passes.
One abstention. One. Yeah. He needed two.
Oh, right. You're good this time around. Yes, okay. So four ayes, one abstention, no nays, and a full commission, five. I'm all messed up with my numbering again.
One more time. Yeah, exactly.
All right. So I will get these to you, Annette, today before I leave.
Thank you.
Then we'll move on to our regular agenda. Item 2023-071, conditional use permit for HWMC Farming, Inc. This is an item that was continued from our April 25 agenda. And Madeline, you're up.
I am up. Give me just a second to.
Link. One.
Sure. It's on. Sorry. I will speak up. Okay. All right. So, good morning, Madeline Flandreau. This is project number 2023-071, which is a conditional use permit for HWMC Farming, Inc. This item was continued from the hearing date, from this hearing, to this hearing date, per the request of the applicant during the commission hearing on April 25, as they were trying to reach a settlement with the adjacent landowner. They have since settled, and the applicant wishes to continue the processing of this application. There have been some changes since the staff report was drafted, but I am presenting the original project and will update you. So the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to continue to operate a cannabis cultivation site after losing their lease of the adjacent parcels, which had allowed them to establish the operation without the native use permit per Calaveras County Code Section 1795-050D2. After this occurred, the applicant had less than 20 acres available for cultivation, so a conditional use permit is required before they could alter their existing cannabis cultivation permit with the county's Division of Cannabis Control, which I'll be referring to as the DCC. So the subject site is one legal parcel, that is 15.27 acres in size, with two APNs, 020-028-081 and 020-029-188, and is located here at 1770 Railroad Flat Road in Railroad Flat. The parcel is zoned RA, so residential agriculture, and is developed with a single-family residence, the cultivation premises, which includes three separately fenced areas totaling 43,560 square feet, which is one acre of canopy and a processing structure. The applicant's cultivation permit was approved in August of 2020 without a CUP because at the time of the application, the applicant leased two adjacent parcels owned by Colleen Kelly, which are these, yes, those two parcels there, which brought them up to the 20-acre minimum for compliance with subsection D2. On November 2, 2023, Ms. Kelly notified the DCC that the lease had expired back in May of 2023 and that she was revoking her permission for the applicant to use her parcels. As you can see in the aerial image here, the cultivation premises are located on the subject parcel. No cultivation was occurring on the leased parcels. This aerial image is a couple of years old. It was simply acreage that they needed in order to meet the 20-acre minimum. So I wanted to clarify in subsection D2, it says two things that are relevant here. At the top of this table in the code, it states, "The applicant, if applying for an outdoor or mixed light cultivation permit, owns a parcel or contiguous parcels, or leases all or part of a parcel on which they apply to cultivate, must conform to the following requirements." And then it has this table that states that RA-zoned parcels that are 20 acres or more, which is the third line down, just need to apply for the ministerial cultivation permit. And parcels that are zoned RA that are 10 to 19.9 acres in size requires a CUP and a cultivation permit. So on November 6, the DCC sent the applicant a notice of violation stating that the withdrawal of consent was received from Ms. Kelly and that because the applicant's acreage now totaled less than 20 acres, they were now in violation of subsections D2 and also subsection D4, which requires that the applicant have and maintain notarized landowner consent to engage in commercial cannabis cultivation activities on the parcel. The notice of violation gave the applicant 30 days to complete one of three options. First, to apply for a CUP and for the 15-acre parcel. The second, to enter into a lease for another contiguous parcel to meet the required 20 acres, or withdraw the cultivation permit, remediate the site, and reapply on a new parcel. The planning department received this CUP application on December 6, 2023, within the time period that was set by the DCC. And the application was circulated for comments for 30 days, during which no agencies provided comments. However, a comment letter was received in opposition to the project from Mr. Travis Owens with Murphy's Law, who is representing Ms. Kelly. The staff report goes into a lot of detail about the opposition to the project. However, all of those issues have now been resolved between the applicant and Ms. Kelly, and they have entered into a settlement agreement. In April, Mr. Owens notified the DCC that Ms. Kelly was actually reinstating landowner consent to lease these same parcels. So the applicant's cultivation permit is now again in good standing with the DCC. But the applicant has continued, has asked to continue the processing of the CUP as a backup, just in case something falls through with the lease again. And you all have a copy, I believe, of this letter that we just received yesterday from Mr. Owens with Murphy's Law, which states that Ms. Kelly has withdrawn her opposition to the CUP, and it also confirms that an agreement is in place and that the applicant is in process, has purchased these adjacent parcels on the east side from Ms. Kelly, which brings their acreage now up to the 20-acre minimum. But the deed wasn't recorded before this hearing, so we're also just moving forward with the processing of the CUP, just in case. So this project was processed consistent with the requirements of the SECO guidelines, Section 15168, as the proposed conditional use permit is a later activity within the scope of the Programmatic Environmental Impact Report and the addendums certified by the Board to approve the cannabis regulatory program. While not required, the potential impacts of the proposed project were analyzed using the Appendix G checklist to determine if there were any new significant impacts or new information from this project, which are outside of the scope of the program EIR, but no impacts related to the proposed cannabis cultivation were identified in the initial study that you have in the attachments there of your packet that had not already been addressed in the EIR. So in conclusion, the approval of a conditional use permit for the purpose of growing cannabis doesn't guarantee that the cannabis cultivation permit will be reapproved after the applicant alters their site plan and application with the DCC. The permit application is vetted by the county to ensure eligibility under the cannabis regulatory program, and any resulting permitted cultivation premises will be subject to all the requirements for both Chapter 1795 of the county code and the Prventee's state-issued commercial cannabis license. And Mr. Zach Tervong is here on behalf of the applicant if you have any more questions regarding the settlement. And that is the end of my presentation. Do you want me to leave this up?
Yeah, please. Does anybody have any questions for Madeline before we give that applicant a chance to speak?
Yes, just to clarify, we are proceeding today as if there has been no agreement.
Correct.
No settlement. The controversy still exists, and they're trying to make sense out of that under those circumstances. Is that right?
Well, no. Not. We're proceeding with the idea that he doesn't have sufficient land, but we have a letter saying that.
No, I understand that, but I mean that we are, yes. What we are acting upon today are the conditions that existed in April. I mean, that's the source, the basis for our action today.
Correct.
That those conditions still exist.
Correct.
With everybody hoping that this settlement works out and everything's fine.
Yes.
I have one question as to what's on the screen up there. Right. What are the cultivation areas? It looks like some's green, some's gray, but.
Wish I had a pointer.
I can ask that of the applicant.
I don't know. Sorry. We used to. So there are three fenced cultivation areas, one, two, three, and then this is a processing structure.
Okay.
And then there's a residence in there.
Yes, you could leave that up on the screen while the applicants talk. We're having that.
Any other questions for Madeline? Nope. Okay. Would the applicant like to speak for the applicant's representative?
I guess I do have one quick question. So in the past, have we ever allowed somebody that had less than 20 acres?
Yes, with a CUP.
With a CUP, okay. So we have in the past, there's precedents.
The ordinance actually. Yes. The ordinance actually says that if you have between, what was it, 10 and 20, and you're in the zone, then you can grow only if you have a CUP. Yeah. And that's in 1795.
And we have approved one of those in the past?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And more than one, I believe.
A CUP? We have, this is our first CUP.
Or the others, AUPs?
We've done ZAs for cannabis.
Oh. I could have sworn we had.
No, this is our first CUP.
I stand corrected.
Well, I think we're within commission. Zach Tervong, before you have a speech, I'm going to see far right and sit back there. Thank you to Val and all staff, or Karen and Shaq for, as well as the recommendation of approval that was in place even in April prior to the withdrawal of the opponent's opposition. And I would just state, Commissioner Lattish, that that is a fundamental difference between from where we were at in April to now. The former opponent, now supporter's counsel is here in the audience to verify that a settlement is in fact in place, and the deeds to the parcels that are being purchased as a subject of that settlement will be recorded probably early next week. We have the original documents in my office, and they just need to make their way to the recorder's office, fully signed and notarized. But as to the subject of the CUP hearing, I think it's important to note a few things. Number one, there has never been a single code violation on this property. We're currently up to speed with the county on all of our tax obligations, as well as you can see, based on the physical layout of the cultivation site, the physical infrastructure exists wholly on the parcel ending in 188. Now, we were formally leasing Ms. Kelly's parcel ending in 086 simply for the purpose of comprising 20 acres on paper, and that was the subject of the lease. We've never occupied really any physical presence on her property as it relates to the operation of the business. So I think it's very important to note that we have demonstrated the ability to operate independently on that single parcel, or the two parcels, the main block in the middle and then the parcel just fronting Railroad Flat Road. We've been able to operate wholly within those parcels as far as the physical infrastructure is concerned without any incident or any issue whatsoever. Also very happy that we've been able to confer with Ms. Kelly and her counsel to resolve the prior issues and controversy, and to have their support today is important, not only for the approval of this conditional use permit, should it be the will of the commission, but also for the purpose of mutual beneficial enjoyment of each of these parties, Ms. Kelly of her residence and her property, and Mr. McCree for continuing operation of this business, which, as Mr. Owens noted, has served to benefit both to Ms. Kelly as well as to the county. And so I'm here today asking that you adopt staff's recommendation of approval in light of these circumstances, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I'm wondering why we don't, why you're not asking for a continuance, a further continuance of this until everything is resolved and then you could withdraw your application, because if we do this on the basis of what was presented to us in April, why, I think you're going to have real setback problems. And if we, we, well, there's, the way I'm reading this, there's cultivation almost to the property line of.
Can't believe the property line shown on here, but that was going to be one of my questions also. So maybe you can ask it. Ask if he knows if he's 75 feet from the property line.
Certainly. And if you look at the highlighted parcel, the green highlighted parcel, that, those two parcels ending in 189 and 083, Mr. McCree is purchasing those parcels.
No, I understand that.
That's not the question.
And that's great, but I'm looking at it the way, the way I understand it, you're continuing with this application because something could go awry. Is that right?
We would like to have the CUP granted because of the fact that we have the ability to operate wholly on parcel ending in 188. The 75-foot setback, if you look at the garden area closest to the green highlighted parcel line, that can easily be adjusted if you take a look at the empty space to the left-hand side, looking at it as it exists right now, between all of the, kind of to the left and down from all of those garden areas, we can expand and comprise a full acre of canopy within that space and adjust our garden area according.
I think if I could address that issue, one is the property lines shown on our GIS system are notoriously inaccurate, so to rely on that visual image there is, you can't tell. The permit that was issued in 2020 would have verified existing setback requirements, otherwise they could not have issued the permit.
But that wouldn't have been applicable because they were leasing.
No, no, they were not leasing that property. They were leasing the property on the other side.
Oh, I see.
So that was not a part of the original lease. So they already meet that setback requirement.
So I actually have a question related to this, the same issue, which I think I'm probably doing the same stuff as Tam, which is, so yes, you would have the ability to move it, and that requirement would come as part of the modification to your cannabis cultivation permit.
Correct.
That's not going to have any bearing on us today, really. However, I have a concern that in continuing with this conditional use permit, that permit runs with the property, and any conditions we impose on you today, you will have to comply with even after you purchase that property, unless you were to let go of the conditional use permit and modify your cultivation permit yet again for the 20 acres. Would be my understanding, so I was wondering if Peter or Madeline could confirm that.
The only conditions we have are compliance with Chapter 1795.
But we could impose other conditions.
That's true.
Yes. Understood.
And you don't know what those are yet.
In that regard, well, I mean, no need to be mysterious about it. I was, given that back in April, I was going to ask the condition, a couple of conditions to be added. "Applicants shall obtain a survey of property lines of the subject parcels owned by the applicant by a professionally licensed surveyor," because there was arguments, there were arguments at that time as to where the property lines were, et cetera. And this one apparently is already satisfied. "Subject to possible additional conditions imposed by the Division of Cannabis Control, applicants shall make necessary adjustments in order to comply, at the least with applicable setback rules."
And I'm happy to report, Commissioner Lattish, that actually both of those conditions are in fact satisfied. As part of the settlement that we reached, Mr. McCree and HWMC did pay for a professional survey to be conducted. The surveyor was hired by Ms. Kelly herself, and so that survey has been completed.
What a great idea.
Great minds, great minds, as they say.
So you are, if we added those as conditions to the conditional use permit, it would not bother you?
Those are already conditions of the cannabis control permit.
Well, and.
I recall that being part of the requirements there was to hire a professional surveyor and what, in any event, a question.
Anyhow, so that was the reason why I was suggesting maybe you would want a continuance of this, in case those conditions were viewed as onerous and unnecessary once the settlement is fully done. But if those conditions don't bother you, why, I have no problem with.
Not at all. Not at all. We're happy to abide by those conditions, as stated by counsel and Ms. Flandreau. We are subject to 1795 regardless of the CUP, and we didn't got to get a survey to confirm property alerts.
I think you'll want to listen to the discussion of all the commissioners, because I believe there may be other conditions that will be proposed and may or may not make it into the resolution.
Understood.
So that's all I'm suggesting, is that you're taking the chance of having the original property encumbered by conditions that you would prefer not to have.
So long as we continue or exercise our right to the entitlement to operate a CUP.
Can I try to state that again?
So long as we continue to exercise our cultivation rights under the CUP entitlement as opposed to a ministerial permit, I understand that could be, could be an issue. I'm hoping that in the discretion of the commission, that, you know, if you take into consideration all these factors that are present today in reaching your decision.
I don't see how we can take in all the additional factors. If it's settled, there's no problem. If you acquire these parcels, which you have acquired but hasn't recorded, as I understand, then there is no problem. But we're looking at this as if there is still an existing problem, or at least a potential problem. That's the reason I understand that the applicant is continuing the application for a conditional use permit. We can't look at this as if everything's been solved.
I understand your perspective.
I think that they're continuing forward because they would retain the option to sell that property off and still be able to cultivate on their remaining property with the CUP if they had it. It would maintain some flexibility for them in the future.
That's certainly part of consideration. What's up?
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, I appreciate that.
You'll have it up.
Does that structure below the cannabis grow, is that Ms. Kelly's house?
Below the L-shaped parcel?
Right. At the crook of the L, there's a house there.
That's Mr. McCree's parcel.
What's that?
That's Mr. McCree's residence. That's a residence on.
The one at the bottom with the little blue, where it looks like a swimming pool almost, in the green.
Yeah, I believe that's.
Good.
Ms. Kelly, is that Ms. Kelly's? Yeah, Ms. Kelly. Mr. McCree's is further up within 188.
Yeah. So that's where Ms. Kelly lives?
Correct.
And she's happy with, she lives right there, and she's happy with what you guys have agreed with?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question, but I'm not sure who's going to be able to answer it. Reviewing the material, there was a temporary restraining order obtained, and I'm sure that perhaps you might be able to answer that better. And let's say perhaps that it was resolved, and of course, now you guys have come to an amicable agreement to proceed. I'm still concerned about the danger to the, I imagine there's some children in Ms. Kelly's residence, and there's a vicious dog that seems to run about and get away and do awful things. And that's not listed in any of the information we're addressing here. It's not in the In My Marine Pack report, probably not supposed to be. But what about that? Because I'm concerned about the children's safety. I know pit bulls are, you know, designed to be aggressive, and that situation combined with children just kind of rubs me the wrong way. Please enlighten me, either one of you.
Understood. I'll state my piece on that, and Mr. Owens can elaborate. One, a dismissal of that restraining order was filed just this morning as part of the settlement, and as part of this settlement, all the issues that preceded the CUP application was dogs from either owner crossing property lines. It was prior to the matters in controversy coming to a head. There was a friendly relationship between Ms. Kelly and Mr. McCree. The dogs kind of shared the land and ran around and played. But to your point, to your point, as part of this.
Dogs cannot sign on the dotted line.
Understood. As, to answer your question, certain agreements have been put in place to ensure that dogs are kept completely within that structure, or that they are allowed outside accompanied by another person on a leash. No F's and R's about it. And that was also prior to its dismissal, the subject of the order.
I just also want to point out for the commission that there's a separate ordinance, Title 6 of the county code, which requires, it's not even discretionary, requires if the animal services gets reports of animal bites on other animals or on humans, there's measures that they have to take. on other animals or on humans, there's measures that they have to take and take before a hearing officer or court. So that animal, I know it was raised in a very florid way in your packet, but it's, those issues are really not resolved as land uses. They're resolved through another enforcement body in county code.
And I do understand that it is not even a land use issue. But that doesn't mean that we need to not discuss this.
There's potentially a land use condition that could help prevent a future issue.
Certainly, we don't want to see harm to come to anyone as a result of the way that we're operating our business or the animals that are maintained on that. Certainly not any child. I would want to state just for the record that there was never any harm to any child from our animals, from our operation. There was a perceived threat by virtue of the presence of those animals. We've addressed that perceived threat to the satisfaction of Ms. Kelly, her counsel, and all the parties that were concerned here. So that's where we sit today, but I understand the concern. We share that concern. And it has been addressed adequately as far as the parties involved.
I just want to say I commend the parties on reaching this agreement. And I imagine it wasn't always very easy, but it sounds as if you've done what people ought to do and that is get together and solve the problem. So I commend everybody involved.
Thank you. Mr. Owens, as the counterpart to this.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this item? No. Okay. Anybody online in it?
No.
Doesn't hurt.
Yeah, leave, let's go ahead and leave it up. Okay, then we will close the public comment portion of this hearing. Bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'm gonna distribute my proposal.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, ideas, thoughts to share, questions for Madeline?
I am definitely going to have some comments, but let Tim go first. He has more, I'm sure.
No, I don't.
So, so here's where I'm at with this. What we do today is going to basically set a precedence for a smaller than twenty-acre parcel. And for me, I know this is rural agriculture, but this is a little bit different because it affects all your neighbors. If you're growing corn, that's not going to affect your neighbors. If you're growing hay, it's not going to affect your neighbors. I think twenty acres is too small myself, but it is what it is. But when we're going to allow this person to shrink the size of their parcel and still do cannabis, I think it sets a precedence throughout the county that we could see that happen in the future. And it definitely affects the neighbors. Now, nobody's here complaining right now because they've made an agreement, but in the future, there could be a lot of people that complain about it. And it is a nuisance smell, I believe, and it's different than, say, chickens because it's not a controlled, chickens aren't a controlled substance. Marijuana is a controlled substance. So the odor that you get from a chicken, I see it differently than the odor you get from a cannabis grow. And I think that it could present a problem to us down the road, and we're going to set the precedent right now if this is accepted. And for me, I don't, I don't believe that it should, smaller than twenty acres, even though you can get a CUP. That's just my belief on the subject, and I think I'm being objective and not subjective in this.
So given that they're entitled to consider it and then to condition it appropriately on their conditions that would make you more comfortable with the situation.
I don't know how you could possibly.
At greater distances to property lines.
Well, at the very least, yeah, at the very least.
Right, you can think about that.
Yeah. But we definitely are setting a precedence here today, so I think it needs to be considered.
So I think in passing the ordinance, the board has told us, we want you to consider letting, the board decided that these smaller parcels can have grows on them and it depends on the site-specific conditions. So if there's something unique about the individual site that requires additional controls on it or requires denial, that it would, instead of, I don't know that the board, that we really have the authority to second-guess the board on the ordinance, but certainly to the extent that nuisance potential has shown up in a land use way on this particular parcel, I think what we were supposed to do is look to see whether there's additional conditions or whether there's something unique topographically or what have you about this parcel that makes it impossible to grant the CUP in terms of just legislative, how we go about interpreting ordinance.
Look how she said that so much more comprehensively than I did. You have any comments or thoughts?
Yeah, I think Tim hit it when they, he said they should just, you know, kick this down the road until it was solved by the, between the parties. If it's going to get solved between the parties, well, then that's fine. I don't think we need to do a CUP that you, for something that's going to solve itself.
In two weeks.
Make precedence, yeah. So I'm inclined to say, I changed my mind while I was listening to it. So I'm going to probably be a no.
I think particularly, given the concern about the smells, et cetera, that we well, may well be leaning toward increased setback requirements, which I would think would complicate things for the applicant. I, anyhow, I think maybe a continuance is a good thing, even though you've had no objections to the conditions that I suggested. There may be additional conditions coming in that are just going to complicate the life of the applicant unnecessarily if indeed this whole thing gets settled.
So you're suggesting a continuance until two weeks?
I just also wanted to comment, so when, and there is actually some sort of case law on this, but if somebody applies for the CUP, even if they don't need to, when they've paid the money and applied and they have a right to apply for it, the commission does have to hear it out and provide an answer. I don't know that we, that a court would support. We just don't think you need one, as a reason, as a reason for denial.
It would have to be their choice to.
They could choose to rescind their request.
Which is why I was trying to give them a heads up of the implications of continuing down this route. Hector, do you have other thoughts or?
Well, mine is kind of consistent here, and that is, what would a delay or continuance in order for this to be concluded entirely? What would, what effect would that have on the overall process?
So if it were continued and the applicant still desired to obtain the conditional use permit on this parcel alone, it would make no difference, other than the fact that he would have another option should the applicant decide to discontinue the lease on the other property. He would, he could rely on the two parcels combined that he's purchasing to meet the twenty-acre requirement. However, if he decides for one reason or another to focus just on the, what is it, sixteen-acre parcel? Fifteen-acre parcel that is currently where the operation is and the commission granted the conditional use permit, then he would have the right to just solely focus on that and could dispose of that other property should he so choose. So continuance, if it's still the desire of the applicant to have a permit that would allow him to grow on the fifteen-acre parcel, would not change anything today, other than the fact that we would know for certain that the property had been recorded. That's probably unlikely to change, you know, because it's going to be recorded, you know, we'll have that option to utilize both parcels and get a cannabis cultivation permit from DCC without going through a use permit.
Just modifying their current.
Would modify the current application to change the parcel number through DCC.
Right. And we wouldn't be involved, but it's up to them. So they have made an application.
The current grow is two parcels, even though it only looks like one, I guess?
No.
It's two APNs.
It's two APNs, the line that runs.
Is the book go through it or something? Okay, so, but if we allow it the way it is, they could dispose of the property they just purchased at some point and then they would have the fifteen.
They would need to amend their cannabis permit to DCC to just have it on that one property, two parcels.
Yes, but if we allow it, it would be allowed.
If we allow, it would be allowed. If, if. If they were to withdraw the application.
Apply so long as the conditional use permit is in force. So even if they chose to use the two parcels, they'd still have to comply with the conditions that are going to run with the property and that is the risk they are taking. So they might not be able to make use of that second parcel anyway, depending on what conditions we were to impose on them today. Which is, the whole reason I'm bringing it up is I just want you to see that there are both future flexibility advantages to having the second parcel and current risks.
So procedurally, they could have withdrawn the application and just gone with the other parcel. They would still need to activate the permit for it to become effective and they could choose not to activate it within the timeframe of issuance. And it would go away.
Right.
They could also, I believe, you know, activate the permit and then decide we no longer want to operate under that permit. I'm not sure what the technical term is.
Then, no.
Yeah, it would expire, or they could say, we're no longer operating under this permit. We're just going to operate under the permitted by right rules of the DCC.
So I don't know that you could just put it on hold, though. I think it would either have to expire under the way we have things written.
No, it wouldn't be put on hold. It would be rescinded, essentially.
Yes, exactly. So we're saying the same thing, but you're using better language. So I'm going to invite you back up.
Appreciate.
To address comments from Commissioner Parker and Commissioner Robey, I would mention around the immediate garden area as well as the shop on site, there is a chain link fence, six-foot chain link fence, as well as part of the settlement between the parties. We're going to be putting up a six-foot deer fence around all of the property lines surrounding the parcel. Additionally, if you take a look at the distance between Ms. Kelly's parcel ending in 086, that L-shaped parcel, as well as the actual cannabis-touching elements of that operation, which would be the garden areas and the shop, those are a significantly further distance than seventy-five feet away from her property lines. I would venture to say that, you know, the closest cannabis aspect of Mr. McCree's operation is probably closer to four hundred and fifty or five hundred feet away. All of that said, I think under the circumstances, given the comments of the commission, a short continuance, should you be inclined to grant one, may be appropriate to allow for the recording of the deeds, subject to the purchase of the parcels, further conference with planning as well as with my client as to, you know, what he would like to do with this moving forward. As well, I would inquire with Mr. Maurer, the activation period for the CUP, would that be eighteen months?
Approximately, it's, we have a strange provision in our code that says it expires on December thirty-first of the following year. So December thirty-first of 2025.
Understood. And just to note, we do, we do intend, even if the CUP were granted, to continue to operate under a ministerial permit utilizing the parcels ending in 083 and 189. Those are the furthest to the right as you're looking at them now. As you can also see, we kind of get a little closer to those parcels and there is a pending permit alteration application right now that has us expanding into that parcel ending in 083. So we are gradually moving further and further away from Ms. Kelly's parcel and any sort of interference with that. That being said, I would be inclined to agree. It should be the will of the commission to maybe a month, month and a half continuance of this matter in lieu of potential denial of the CUP.
Is that been you?
If we kick the can down the road a couple of months and everything's deeded or recorded or anything, are you going to continue with the request of CUP?
I'd have to consult with my client to give you a solid answer on that.
Because I would imagine that if you are planning on doing that, there would be restrictions.
Understood. And I think, you know, the writings on the wall with the comments being that likely a further setback as a condition of approval of the CUP from parcel ending in 086. And certainly I could say we're not opposed to that. Certainly, the extent of that sort of restriction would have some bearing on our consideration, but we'd be happy to actually work with planning on that and potentially discuss proposing such conditions prior to the next hearing being held.
So because like Tim said, it's not a mystery, I would propose conditions that would be primarily focused on additional clearances and fencing. So it's not like I'm, I have some strange idea out here of something I'm going to try to impose on this, but you can see what the concerns are. It sounds like these are things that you've already considered anyway, but, so.
To have them formalized, I think, I think everyone would be much more comfortable, potentially with approving it. But like when Mr. Ladish brought up, hey, you know, I'd like to see you have a survey, I was happy to say, hey, that box is checked. Fencing as well, these are all concerns that are shared not only by the commission but also by Ms. Kelly, her counsel, and that have been addressed. But to your point, I think a little more time to solidify the staff report, amend the staff report, get the recordings in place and a little further discussion with planning and with my client.
So would you like it continued to a date certain and can you guys take a look at the calendar and see what makes sense? Or would you like it?
July twenty-fifth or August eighth would be the next meetings coming up.
So the August twenty-second meeting?
I won't be here on July twenty-fifth. I think I'm going to be the applicant in a planning commission hearing elsewhere.
I think I'm out of town on that.
The applicant was suggesting a couple of months.
Yeah, August twenty-second meeting?
Yeah, a month, month and a half, you said. So August eighth or August twenty-second would be the next available commission dates.
Either of those.
Up to you guys, whatever.
Yeah, I'll so move that we continue up until August twenty-second.
Is there a second?
My second that.
Let's continue to a date certain.
To a date certain, August 22nd. All in favor? Any opposed? None? Tenses? Five, zero. And we'll see on August 22nd. Thank you. Maddie? Let me, let me this, Sanya. Let me this second. The second. So we will get started on item two of our regular agenda, 2024-009, conditional use permit for Doug Gonzalez. And Catherine is not here, so who's going to handle that?
Catherine's not here and Madeline's going to take it for her.
All right, Madeline.
I'm in a robe.
Hello, hello.
Marina, let us over there.
Yay.
Robbie, see.
There we go. Okay, so this is conditional use permit 2024-009 for Doug Gonzalez. And the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to construct a 12-foot by 24-foot addition onto the rear of an existing legal non-conforming residence that was built prior to the adoption of the zoning code and encroaches into the now existing side setback in Murphy's. The proposed addition, shown here in red, would lengthen the existing structure and add a deck to the existing non-conforming encroachment, but would not extend the structure further into the setback. So the subject parcel, APN 068-017-041, is located here at 463 Church Street in a zone, single-family residential. The neighboring properties consist of single-family residences along Church Street to the north and the west and mixed commercial uses on Historic Main Street to the south and east. Development on the parcel consists of a 1,012 square foot single-family residence and a detached garage. The residence was constructed in 1938, approximately two feet from the western side property line. The current required setback for the R1 zone is five feet. So as the structure encroaches into the side setback, the residence is considered an existing legal non-conforming structure because it was built before the adoption of the zoning regulations. So if the, so the proposed expansion to the non-conforming structure requires a conditional use permit pursuant to Calvales County Code Section 1704-010C and 1792-020. The application after receipt by the planning department was circulated to various county departments, local public agencies, and state departments requesting comments relative to the request, during which letters were received from the Public Works Department and Environmental Management Agency, both of which had no comments to the application. The building department responded with standard comments for a building permit and requirements for their construction materials. And there were also two comments that were received in favor of the project from adjacent landowners on Church Street. So the addition will not encroach closer to the side property line than the existing legal non-conforming residence, only expanding the structure parallel to the property line, which you can see here. And the site plan demonstrates how the addition will still be meeting the 20-foot rear setback requirement. The parcel is designated by the general plan as having a historic center land use designation and is located within the Murphy's community plan area, but Murphy's doesn't have an adopted community plan. There are no goals or policies that have been adopted. The proposed addition is compatible with the historic center land use designation, which is intended for a mix of commercial and residential uses. As proposed, the project is also consistent with the applicable goals and policies of the county general plan, including goal LU-4, which encourages the preservation and enhancement of existing buildings and for new development to be compatible with surrounding uses. The proposed addition will not change the current use of the property and will make the residence more functional. Pursuant to Section 15301E, which exempts minor alterations of existing structures, this project was found to be exempt from CEQA and a notice of exemption has been prepared. This section expressly exempts additions to existing structures, provided that the addition will not exceed 50% of the floor area of the structures, provided that, excuse me, not exceed 50% of the floor area before the addition or 2,500 square feet, whichever is less. So the request is to construct a 288 square foot addition to the rear of a 1,012 square foot residence in the R1 zone, which exceeds neither threshold. So in conclusion, the project as proposed conforms to the applicable goals and policies of the general plan. The planning process allows for the use while giving the opportunity to mitigate impacts to neighbors through permit conditions. The project is found to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning in the general vicinity. And the subject property is adequate in land area to accommodate the proposed use and is found to have safe and adequate access with no site improvements required. And the permit has been conditioned as necessary for the protection of the public health, safety, and welfare. And Mr. Gonzalez is here with us if you have any questions about the property or the proposed construction. And that's my presentation.
A question for the planning department.
Sure.
It appears to me that the serious question is whether a variance is required in this specific stance and that you have a building two feet away from the property line and we would be extending along that line additional structure, in addition to the first structure, that is also two feet from the property line. And to me, that's, I remember we're deciding this in perpetuity, that it'll always be there like that until some change occurs. It seems to me that that's, we don't have the unique, special, and unusual circumstances applicable to this that would justify a variance. And I really don't see why a variance is not required here. The section that the, or sections that the staff report relies upon talks about expansions of existing buildings, but doesn't say expansions of existing buildings that would increase the amount of non-compliance. And so I have, I have a real problem.
It is, Peter Maurer, from planning director, it is our interpretation and it is common in the industry, in the 40 years that I've been working as a, to have a public planner, that a use permit is the vehicle that's used for expansion in this case, partly because it would be very difficult to meet the findings for variance. It basically says that you, if you don't grant the variance, you lose the use of the property. Well, they already have the use of the property. So the code has been written to allow for us to consider this type of expansion through a use permit instead of a variance. And it's very clear in the code, a legally existing non-conforming use for structure may be expanded or enlarged upon approval of a conditional use permit pursuant to chapters, et cetera. So that's why we're using a use permit, because that's what the code says, but it's also as a practical matter and, you know, what's the term I'm looking for, sort of the, the industry standard, you could say, this is, this is the vehicle that's typically used.
Even if the, the conditional use permit, the extension permitted by that use permit extends the non-conformity.
For what is that? Yes. In fact, if they were to propose the structure on the opposite side, you know, the addition on the other side of the house, we would not require a use permit at all. It would just be a building permit.
Or a variance.
Or a variance.
Nothing.
Well, I understand by not a variance, but the language of the, of the ordinance, or that any expansion requires a use.
I, I can see how that could be interpreted that way. That is not the way it has been applied.
So through other jurisdictions.
And here.
And here. This is a normal procedure.
Yes, yes.
And in that history, as there have been talked to. Any specific decision by any board or whatever, raising the variance subject?
None that I am aware of. I can't say it has ever been raised.
So I have exactly this situation, a different configuration, but exactly the same issue and in another jurisdiction and they are requiring a variance. And that has been my experience. But that's, you know, it just depends. It's different everywhere. I think we have resolved this in our new code. Cause we have provided a whole new mechanism for this sort of issue that unfortunately we don't have access to yet. And so we have this sort of messy thing where the wording of our current zoning led down this path. And yet it feels like an awkward fit to me, too. But I, I agree with Peter that it would be very hard to make the findings for a variance. And so maybe that was the intention behind the way this was worded originally. Truthfully, I can't remember back that far.
Well, I mean, the fact that it would be hard to make the findings sufficient to support a variance is really why I'm raising this, is this is, this is a decision in perpetuity. So the, if the next, if the next door neighboring property, next owner has a backyard patio that looking toward this property and we are, because of our decision today, the, the part of the property that the next door neighbor is looking at is two, is only two feet from the property line, it could make a difference in the enjoyment of the properties. And it, it just, it seems to me that the variance ordinance and state statute, you know, make it very clear that a variance is, is a serious situation. And for us to, to make a decision that in perpetuity, 12 feet more of this house can be in violation of the current standards. Just, well, it sticks a micro.
I would have to say that, you know, currently the existing adjacent property owner has no problem with this. And if he were, he or she were to sell that property, then the person buying it would know that there is a house that's two feet away from the property, rather than five feet away. And so they could choose to either purchase it or accept that that's what's there. And, and we see that, you know, throughout, you know, historic communities where buildings are located in different positions and if you don't want to be that close to neighbors, then that's not the property you want to buy.
Well, you wouldn't be buying it in Old Town Murphy's.
So you, I think, Matt, I mentioned there was two property owners that said they were fine with it?
Yes.
And one of them is the one that's two feet away?
I believe so. I think that's.
Is that true, Mr. Mazzol?
I've talked to every city.
And they're all fine with it.
But. Why don't we, you come up to this, to this.
Yeah.
So the house that's actually in the backyard that's right up against it is, I think, less than two feet from property. And honestly, it has an overhang that they've put up that comes about two inches from the property. So the whole neighborhood knows what they're getting into when you get into this neighborhood. And every house on the street's the same. And there's not, I have, every day that we're working on this project, neighbors coming over extremely happy. We've raised the walls two feet, we've changed the pitch on the roof, we put copper clad windows in it, it's having copper gutters, metal roofs. So I mean, it's a huge upgrade for the neighborhood. So there's nobody complaining at all about what we're doing. In fact, they're all ecstatic and they stop by every evening when they walk their dogs to see the progress on what we're doing on the house now. So, and they've known that we've been trying to do this for six months. This started back in, in January till now to get this done. So the, the whole back of the house is torn off and the front of the house is done up to this point. We have trusses sitting there, everything's done. Planning department, our plan check has already gone through all the plans for this. Everything's basically on this right here. This gets approved and I literally will go today, call for an inspection for tomorrow's foundations already. I have concrete scheduled for Saturday morning to pour the foundations, because we've been waiting a long time. I have construction loan on this interest only that's been stuck for six months. So it's like, it's getting extremely expensive to add 12 feet to the back of the house to existing houses that are the same two feet off of it around us. And in fact, the, the restaurant that's behind us is about four inches off of a property.
It includes a parapet for our wall.
What's that?
That restaurant has a completely different.
I get it, but I'm just saying, if you look at the property lines at the setbacks, everything in that neighborhood.
Is very tight. So I'm, I, I'm familiar with this piece of property because I did work for the.
Previous owners on the garage.
Some just consulting work. I'm not familiar with the project they're doing, although I knew this project was coming. I didn't know it'd end up here at the planning commission. It's definitely right in the middle of a whole lot of historic buildings that are, none of them are respecting any setbacks. I mean, they're, they're random.
And they're all really nice people in that area, so everybody's.
I'm not even sure that the house is actually parallel to the property line, because it looks a little skewed.
No, it's actually, yeah, it's right.
So maybe it's just the fencing is sort of all in the place there. A lot of the fencing's not on the property lines.
Correct.
So I just.
Even our, our fences in the back, we moved the back fences into our property and left space so that there was room for the restaurant to use the alley and the space around. So we left them over four feet. If I were to put the fence, it would literally have been up against the building and nobody would have been able to walk through the back, so.
So I, I'd like, is there anything else you want to share with us? Will it?
No, just please, I want to get this done, so.
That's it.
So is there anybody online? No. Okay, so we're going to open and close the public comment portion, just to get that out of the way. So this is an opportunity for a public comment on this item. Is there anybody in the audience or online who'd like to make a comment? Since I don't see anybody in the audience or online, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. So before I say anything, do you guys, let's hear from everybody else and then, Tim, you can add to your discussion.
I have absolutely no comment.
No, I have not either.
I'm ready.
Okay.
In questions for the planning department, I understand this phrase is rather strange, but in 17.80.020.d.2, it provides that permitted or conditional uses shall not be permitted to seek variances from the standards of this title. I was reading that as saying, we can't do what we've enforced the doing today. How does the department read that?
I think what that's trying to say is that you can't do what's called a use variance. You can vary the standards, setback, height, those kinds of things, but you can't get a variance for a use. Uses are controlled by the code.
That's in the variance section. He's actually pointing to a different section.
Run that, run that section by me.
It is the variance chapter, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's in, it's in the variance chapter.
Yes. The variance says you can't, exactly what Peter is saying, you can't allow a, a use that's not allowed. But he's pointing to some wording that actually is. But he's pointing to some wording that actually is a little bit different and, and again, awkwardly.
Oh, yeah. Which is yet another reason why we wound up at the code. What, what was that section again?
It's in seventeen point eight zero point oh two zero point D two. Let's see if I can find my copy of it.
Seventeen oh eight.
No, eight oh.
Eight oh. Okay.
Point oh two oh. Kyle?
I can't wait to have our news.
No. Variance, seventeen eight oh, at the oh two oh D. The whole, the whole section deals, the following shall not be permitted to seek variances, whatever that means.
Yeah, yeah. So, that is exactly what I'm saying, is that those are the things that variances don't apply for. You can't get a variance for density, that's controlled by the general plan. You can't get a variance for permitted use, that is in the code of, under uses, not variances. Variances are, are adjustments to standards, and that's not a standard. And we said the size of billboards, you can't get a variance for.
So, that does not apply here because?
Because they are proposing a change in the standard, which is the setback.
But this is what it says, the following shall not be permitted to seek variance from, from the standards of this. Oh, that's a different one. You were pointing to something else before.
Well.
The, the use of the word standards in that line is misleading and confusing.
In the CUP section, there was something that said it should not, shall not allow.
Yeah.
But, but in this case, we're specifically pointing to the CUP as the remedy for this situation.
Right.
So, it's very.
It's confusing and awkward, but, but this is standard practice and it is, at least in many jurisdictions, maybe not all, as you pointed out. But this, this here says, a variance is not the appropriate tool for these type of modifications. And in seventeen, I think it's oh four, it says that you should use a conditional use permit for expansion.
Other nonconforming.
Nonconforming use or structure. So, that's, that is.
Use or structure.
Use or structure. So, that is why we are taking this forward as a use permit and not a variance.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Well, I, I think there's enough of a question that I didn't see last night, that, that, and it is a question that will be answered by the incoming code as proposed. And without objections from any of the neighbors, et cetera, I can see this as being a stretching, but appropriate, traditional application of the code. And so, I will not stand in the way. Go to the.
So, I, I just have a question for you, if you want to come back up. It has no bearing on my decision on this. You already have a building permit, so you're aware that you won't be allowed to have openings, penetrations, or overhangs on that side of the building, because it is a non-sprinkler building, and that, you cannot have anything that hangs over within two feet.
Actually, on that side of the house, the, the whole grain roof has been cut back just a part of the facial board on it. The other side extends.
So, I don't know what your plans look like. I'm just wanting to give you a heads up, if you had already gone through that process, to realize that there is more than a one hour wall in the way of limitations when you're within that five feet.
Yeah, no, we've, we've already done that, so.
So.
Everything's been addressed.
Any further questions? Well, okay, thank you very much. Let's take a look at the resolution for whatever we've got here. Does anybody have anything that they want to modify?
Well, given my change of approach.
Change of heart.
Give me, give me, give me a, a few minutes, we're going to take a break, I'd need to.
Yeah, how about if we take a ten minute break, come back at ten thirty, and give everybody a chance to look at the resolution quickly, and then we'll, we'll take this up. We are taking a look at the resolution, and I'm certain that Commissioner Latish has something he'd like to share.
Well, since the first one's consequential, on the first, page one, evidence at the bottom of the page, about the fifth line down, where the addition will not exceed fifty percent of the floor area of the structures or is what it should be before. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm wrong on that one.
Okay, I know. It happens so seldom.
The, then I, I think there's a clarification on finding number two, which was the proposed uses consistent, this is on page two, consistent with the county's general plan, any applicable community or special plan, and the provisions of Title seventeen. That would indicate that the, you just read Title seventeen and it's, and it's permitted. I would put the clarification in after the word "and" and before the provisions of Title seventeen, "and with planning commission permit approval" under sections seventeen point oh four point oh one oh point C, and seventeen point nine two point oh two oh of the Calaveras Code, comma, then continue on with the provisions for Title seventeen.
You, you're just trying to point to the section that we're using.
That we're using. Just reading Title seventeen by itself, you don't say.
It would be the entire thing, yeah.
Evidence of compliance, which below cites to the specific.
It does.
Sections, because this is a finding they put in all of their resolutions.
Okay, you're right. Again, you have the, if you have it, yeah, that would be sufficient.
So, it's perfect.
So, this. As much as you tried, you tried. We give you an eight for effort.
I think I'd like to hear Madeline read the recommendation.
Great. Got all about it. Okay, so, staff recommends that the planning commission approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero one three with the conditions in, for CUP, to construct a twelve foot by twenty-four foot addition onto the rear of an existing legal nonconforming residence at four sixty-three Church Street in Murphy's, which is APN zero six eight dash zero one seven dash zero four one in the R one zone.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Second. To approve.
To approve, to approve. We're not approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. So, motion passes five zero with a full commission. And because we had absolutely no changes to the resolution, I could sign that today and give it to Annette. Would you like me to tear it out of my packet, or does somebody want, have one, they want to hand it over?
I guess tradition would say. I wrote on mine, so.
The decision's final, unless appealed to the board within fifteen calendar days.
Yes, thank you. Right, thank you. But I.
Forgot my role.
Yes, exactly, me too. I forgot everyone's role.
Their own mind's own.
Okay. Well, then after it goes to the board, she'll send it to me, it'll all be straight. Okay.
Unless it's appealed to the board, so until the, yes. Okay, let me get back to our agenda.
Get that done. We have a question.
Yes, come on.
Two, two tickets, but she can't tell him, then go back to work.
But at the same time, this is, I need to go take this to the plan check, and now that this is approved, they check that last box, and I can call for my inspection for tomorrow.
I believe the appeal.
But theoretically, anybody can appeal an approval like this one, a use permit approval, to the board within fifteen calendar days. When we don't have any known objections, the chances of that are very slim, but theoretically, somebody could be watching and objecting. So, I don't know what the process is to, if they wait for the appeal period before they approve building permits. I honestly don't know what the internal process is, but I think they are supposed to wait. But the chances of you having an appeal are probably very slim.
But someone would have to participate in this hearing.
Oh, right, you can't hear, you should participate and draw up your objection, so you.
Yeah, you're probably okay.
That's kind of the homework I did, because this thing was done today, and everybody agreed that I could take these papers right back over with the signature, and they could finalize it, hand me my permit, and I could call for a inspection.
So, then it's.
Okay, so, do I need something, take something signed?
So, does somebody have a clean one they had it written on? I don't have the vote on it, though. That's the only thing.
You don't.
So do I.
I don't have the vote.
Oh, can you handwrite it in?
I can write. Sure, if you want to do that.
Yes, absolutely.
It's either.
Oh, God, you don't know what to do. This has been going so long. What's that? Hopefully, Saturday. So, the thing is, if I get this, I call for inspection tomorrow, everything's done and it's ready, so we pour on Saturday. It's my birthday, so I get time to do this, right?
I'll, I'll get it when I get the minutes, too. So, it's a cool area, wasn't it? Nope, I've got it.
And Mr. Gonzalez, I appreciate your, your full presentation. It gave me a much better picture.
I was just kind of winging it from my neighbors, so.
Okay. Informational items, none. Commissioner reports?
Welcome to the new commissioner.
Yes.
Thank you. Get ready for some fun.
I got nothing exciting to report.
My ranch almost burned down last week. Did anybody hear about that?
That was you?
Yeah. Where are you at? I'm in Valley Springs, Carol Fire. At Carol Fire.
Oh, yeah, but, no.
An old burn pile that started up two months ago.
Seriously?
Yep.
It had, it was still hot.
Certainly, yes. I've brought it there every single year, it's never had an issue, but this year.
Yeah, you did, I was evacuated for three days.
Oh, huh?
I was evacuated for three days.
That was the error of Carol.
Let me do that.
I learned my property, didn't learn any video.
I guess.
I saw her no foul days.
I saw lightning actually start a fire that last. Yeah, I did, and so, it's fire, crazy.
Does the planning director have anything he'd like to share?
They do, actually. We talked about our excitement about the new zone code going, being adopted. It will be heard by the board at a special meeting on July sixteenth. We're hoping that it will be adopted that day. So, that's moving forward. I've got a number of other projects that the department is working on that are in one stage or another of development. Probably the one that's closest to coming before you would be the short-term vacation rental ordinance. We're also working on the Copperupless Community Plan. We have worked with the hardwood advisory committee on oak woodland ordinance, and the greenhouse gas issue is really, is, we're getting information to a potential consultant to do the analysis that we need to do on that.
On that, on that thing, the agricultural commissioner sent some information recently, at least, to the chair or myself, but I don't think she sent it to you out of the.
If you would like to forward that on to me, I would very appreciate it.
How close are we on the Copperupless Community Plan?
So, I know that Supervisor Follendorf is meeting with some members of the community next week. I have reviewed the draft that had been sort of put together by Gabriel, following, following the public meetings that were held earlier this year, I guess they were, or maybe last year. Had proposed some edits to it, or had made some edits to it, met with some members of the community, and so, we're sort of negotiating those, that edit process right now. So, I'm hoping to hear next week from Supervisor where we're at, and then I need to complete the preparation of an addendum to the EIR, fairly simple process, it's what we use for the adoption of the Valley Springs Community Plan, so, I'm sort of borrowing from that. So, we're probably, sort of depending on whether we can resolve some of the differences as far as how much to put in the community plan and how much is already covered in the general plan, I could see it coming to the commission end of August to September. I know that Supervisor Follendorf wants to hear it when it comes to the board. She'll be on maternity, maternity leave from probably the middle of August until the beginning of October. So, probably would go to the board sometime after that, October, November.
When do we think we might hear the short-term vacation rental?
Well, I still have to prepare and circulate a negative declaration on that. That's probably coming potentially at the same timeframe, but could be a little later, where Julie and I have been working on some of the language of that and working out some details. I've been talking to members of the community, sort of pro and con, all vacation rentals, so, still, still working out some bugs on that, but hopefully, within the same timeframe.
Do you anticipate a meeting in the second Thursday of July?
The first meeting in July, you will be meeting as the appeals hearing body, or hearing board. It's the only thing that will be on your agenda, so you're just, you won't be meeting as the planning commission, but you'll have the, an appeal before you, from code enforcement.
It, it might be long.
Hence the one, yeah.
So, if we could avoid the second meeting in July, that would be great for me, so I could be at my other.
I, yeah, I don't know at this point in time what we'll have, it's a month away, so it's hard to, hard to tell.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a lot of projects moving forward, but we don't have a lot of projects.
Right, and they used to be in the evenings, I don't know if they still do that, so then it wouldn't be an issue anyway. They haven't sent me my stuff, okay.
That's all, oh, yes, that's all I have.
Last chance. Then we are adjourned at ten thirty-eight. Hey, look, they're matched up momentarily, the clocks. Thank you, everybody.